August 20th, it is 5:30 PM. All members of council are present. Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Drago, excuse me, is absent this evening. Mr. Cobb?
Mayor, in an effort to use as much time as possible as wisely as possible, I recommend that we just turn it over to Ms. Hayes and let her begin.
Okay. Cliff Notes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. A review, basically, of what we have presented to you for the last couple of work sessions. We made a few changes. I would just direct your attention to those changes. We increased some avalorm, delinquent revenues. We increased some fines and revenues and forfeitures, increased utility taxes. Increased the transfer, if you recall, we brought to you. Mowing contract changed, so that increased the transfer from other funds to the general fund and increased the interest earnings. We also decreased the communication service taxes. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had just received that day, the communication service tax, and it had a reduction of $44,000. And we decreased special, police special events. Those were just the fact that we had overencumbered some funding for additional costs that we had projected. With adding those increases in revenues, we were able to increase police overtime for the Oviedo and the Park Events Plan, increase some funding for the new mowing contract, which we brought to you back at the 1st of August, last of July, increase the transfers to the IT Program Technology Improvement Fund of $44,000 to fund the website. So we're able to fund a redesigned facelift of the website for $44,192. We increased some funding in police for temporary salaries of the front desk coverage for the PD area. Increased our contingency balance, fund balance by $20,000. So therefore, we put $20,000 in the fund line item within the general fund that's called contingency for your discretion to use during the year at this point. So there's $20,000 we put in there this year for that. And then we decreased some of the fuel overall. That was where some of the savings came from. We relooked at fuel based on the prices, federal information. This listing here, that's in attachment one, refers to all those changes at a line item level. So you can see that the reduction in police services, these are the salary accounts, professional service accounts, health accounts, every accounting line. So we provide you those details. I will not go into those unless you have questions, but those are provided to you for your review.
Anybody have any questions? No? You're good.
Okay. In attachment two, we provide you the results of the information I just discussed. So in your budget books we presented back in July, these are just some additional, go to page eight. These are some of the schedules that we provided you in the budget book, attachment two, this is. So we just represented you the new descriptor of the actuals and the budget comparison based on the new numbers we provided you, so that you could do a change-out sheet if you wish to. That's all this is. In a summary, so it gives you a good idea of what ended up transpiring over the period of time. Attachment three also looks at the-
Also, the budget's grown from 25.2 to 28.
That's from the amended 14, 15. Yes, from 25.2 to 28.09, the proposed. Yes, sir.
What'd the extra $3 million revenue come from?
It is a combination of the, we got $400,000 in the grants that we presented to you back in July.
Okay, so that's in that.
It's a combination, yes, sir. Revenue from the avalorm, so it'll be several different sources. Would you like me to detail that out and provide it to you? Okay. So it's just various sources. And we put that in the, if you looked in your proposed budget book, you would actually see the difference in that from line item to line item.
I'm looking up that.
So I'd be glad to do that for you.
Isn't this, this attachment, is the revenue?
It is one of them. It's a form of it, so, but you could see it a little better maybe on some of the other schedules, but you can see cultural revenue there. That's Oviedo and the Park. If you recall, we brought to you about $600,000 change in that. If you look down at grants, you'll see that there's a change in the grants. Just looking at the big ones, the inter-fund transfers, avalorm, you see the one from 9.8 to 10.6, utility taxes. So this is just a summary, a quick summary of that. And attachment three actually breaks it down a little better. Mayor, and it actually shows you the total general fund revenues if you go to attachment three, so that you can see how that 28 million relates to operating revenues versus non-operating revenues, so you can see the breakdown. And you can see that as compared to the amended, so that you see our property tax 9.8 versus 10.6. You can see that the charges for services went from 2.7 to 3.4, which again reflect the Oviedo and the Park anticipated revenues that we plan on, hope to bring in. Intergovernmental transfers or intergovernmental, excuse me, revenues, which are your state share and your communications and your half cents. So that's went from 3.4 to 4.1. So, but that's what makes up the 28 million versus the 25 million the prior years. Okay. And then, and that's a summary of general fund. So that's just strictly general fund. We then, in the memo, discuss and talk about some of the other things that happen through the other funds. And again, I can do that as a summary, or I can answer any questions, whichever is the pleasure of the council. I would bring attention to attachment seven, if you can scroll down to that. It's general fund, you're past it, one, pass it. There we go. We provided this last year as a new schedule, so we provide it again this year. It just gives you an idea, a comparison of if we were to have to fund any one department at a milage rate comparison, it gives you an idea of that. And I mainly give that to you because if you looked at, and I hate to get back and forth, but if you looked at attachment six, back up one, there you go. You would see, scroll down just a little bit, Paul, thank you. You can kind of see the breakdown of the fire for Altamont, Castleberry, Winter Springs. Granted, they are with Seminole County, but because they look at it from a milage rate because they're outsourcing, we try to make sure that we give you comparable if you were to look at our departments, each one of our departments, not just our fire. As in, this one looks at the fire department only. We look at each department and let you know the cost of that department at this point in time by milage rate basis, as well as the total cost in dollars, but we give you what the milage rate would be equivalent to. And then this is the current, what we found when we spoke with the cities. Ms. Jones spoke with most of these cities and/or used their website and found the information in which they presented as their proposed budget milage rate. So that's what this information reflects. And we typically try to present this data to you each year also, just for your review, as well as to give you an idea of the milage ranking, where the city resides, and from a total perspective of total milage rate. Okay. And then, those are just kind of in general. In the memo, I addressed special revenues, and I'll be glad to address any of those if you wish, but we talk about the building services. The contract's up in January, so we, you're aware that we'll either be bringing you a new contractor or a new proposal for building services this year. We did budget it as, for an entire year as the current contract stands, so that there are funds out there budgeted according to the direction of council at the point in time which we bring you either an RFP or a change that we can make an adjustment to those budget dollars at that point in time. But we maintain the 77% versus the 23% of revenue to contract costs. So that's included in the memo. We also discussed a little bit about the stormwater funds, because at this point in time, it's a special revenue fund, and that's going to be, and just in general, we gave you some idea of the effect of those funds to the total funds. CRA, you know that we're going to bring to you CRA. At the next meeting, I believe, September 10th, I believe, there's going to be a CRA. So John Jones from Little John will be presenting you a report at that point in time. We maintain the current plan for the CRA. It's obviously something we can change in the future, but we maintain at this point in time, and we made sure that the budget complies with the CRA plan, so, which is very important now that we will be receiving true CRA funds in this next year, is that we comply with that plan. And speaking with Little John Engineering, that they bring back a revised plan based on your needs for the future year, so that we're not trying to change the plan as well as the budget at the same time, that the plan can be changed now and the budget adheres to it in the following years. So as you desire to make changes to that use of funds, it's done ahead of time. That's kind of our goal there. So just a quick mention of that in the memo. And then we talk about the enterprise funds and just some of the small changes we made in the enterprise funds. We funded a position for wastewater treatment operations for half a year. We showed you that position in there, and that there were some other adjustments in there. And it's just kind of a summary of where the fund ended up going for the year, that it's at, you know, not including debt, it's a 4.5 million or 32% of the total budget for water sewer within the 401 fund. And that we used less contingency, or we added less contingency to the budget this year, but we also ended up using a little bit of that for the mowing contract. You're okay. For the mowing contract this year. So we just kind of showed you those transactions, again, because we brought those to you the 1st of August, last of July, so we wanted to reflect those changes throughout the new year budget. The third generation sales tax money, those funds came in about $33,000 less than projected, so we adjusted those and presented those to you. These are all part of attachment one. There's seven pages in attachment one, and as you flow through attachment one, you'll see that those changes are detailed. Again, if you wish for me to go through any of them, I would be glad to, but it, good about, right there. Come down two pages, Paul, please. But you can see that, here's the Fund 138. So some of those changes that we made, like we funded 2,500 for, I believe this is an ice machine in Fund 138. We used $34,000 contingency for the mowing contract. So we just gave you line item data, so that you can see that, but we gave you the summary information in the memo.
Were you going to rebid the mowing contract?
Well, they rebid the, we did the annual contract for one year until we go out for an RFP, so we spread the funding of that based on-
I mean, when's your next RFP for that? Because I know these guys stepped in-
I think we would anticipate, yeah, I think we'll anticipate seeing that in the first quarter of the new year, so to second quarter sometime in that timeframe.
At the same time, is our intention to bid out everything as far as mowing?
Yes, sir. We're looking at that at total, and I believe that the Public Works Director could probably speak better to that, but we are looking at that from a total perspective of all bidding. And that's one reason it's still split among all the funds. Okay? So it's split among general fund, among enterprise funds, stormwater, because it can be funded from each fund separately among, it could be multiple bids or it could be one bid for different disciplines as far as whether it's right-of-way or just grounds or whatever it might be. So we can split that if we need to.
All right. So we're going to be looking at bidding not only the right-of-way contract, but then the contract as an entirety?
As an entirety, yes, sir. They're looking at-
Would you include Oviedo and the Park?
Yes, it does. I think it does at this point in time. Public Works Director, is that correct, Bobby?
Current contract is Oviedo and the Park. Fire, we could.
We could. So we can include that as part of that.
I think the council has made it clear in the past that we want to see that.
Okay. We can include that in there.
Am I correct?
That looked like surprise.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I mean, these guys doing a good job that you have now, but, you know, I mean, the sooner you can put that all out there, you know, there's so many people that are hungry and would love this contract.
Who doesn't read on the poll now? We do.
We do.
Do you have a lot of work in there?
Yes, sir. I think there were two mowers in this past year, so if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, you know, you get kind of, you know, stuck a little bit, you know, when your other contractor walks out on you, and these guys come in, and by the way, they're doing a great job, but they know your name, so you need to, I bid that out as quickly as you can.
Right. I believe the intent was to bring the entire RFP to council, obviously for approval, with different options available to be able to bid out and then to see who applies for. I believe that was the problem that we had in July. We did not have one company other than the one that we selected really place a offer or bid in on selecting all of the options that we had out there, so I'm sure-
You did a great job plugging the gap.
Yes.
I don't think that's what we're concerned about. I think the concern is going forward.
Uh huh.
You know, there's economy of scale of finding somebody to do the whole thing, and then a manager hired by us to oversee them doing the whole thing rather than part-time managers or having it as part of someone else's job description rather than someone's sole job. It could be cost savings rather than adding employees onto our payroll.
And since it's a temporary, we can definitely reflect that in the budget and as part of the RFP, because this current year that we're looking at, 15, 16, is just a plug, so to speak, to get us through until the RFP has been processed.
I think that extra you have in there, I think is going to go when you put out that RFP and finally get into it, it's going to go way down. That's what I think.
And then, from the budget perspective, as far as looking at the dollar amounts that were adjusted, we've gone through attachment one and two very briefly, and three. Attachment four reflects the enterprise funds data that I just kind of went over in general. Again, we just gave you a summary so that you could do a change-out sheet, so that you could see where we were at in July versus where we're at now. So we just tried to follow through on that process. And then you'll find the expenditure side on, as page two of attachment four. Attachment five, and I don't have that in yours, Paul, attachment five and six that you have, those are the, it's a chart, or you can scroll down when maybe I did include it. There it is, sorry. This is the ad that we present to the newspaper in September. Again, I'd just like to show you where we're at today, if I were to present this out there today. The first one is the one that we actually present, because it has the milage, you can see the milage rate there, it says general fund, 5.0434. That is the one we actually submit to the paper and we post, and it shows our total net revenues, and it shows by fund type. This is the requirement per state statute that we file this. In this manner, they predetermined the category, so to speak. So this is just where we're at today, so as we make changes between now and September 10th, this would be the one that we would file if we make no changes, I should say. This would be the one that we would send to the paper for around September the 15th or so, when we would file the ad, the notice of taxes. But this is from the page one of attachment five is really from a revenue perspective. And then page two of page five, or attachment five, excuse me, is an expenditure perspective, just giving you the look at both sides. And it is in your proposed budget book also. So we just give you the summary of that. Attachment six, we went through, those were just the different cities and their milage rate, so I will not go through that again. Attachment seven is the milage rate equivalent. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. We gave you a snapshot of 14, 15 as compared to 15, 16, so you can see where the remaining, where the expenditure, excuse me, funds may have changed, and then the difference in the milage rate, so that you can look at those and compare it. We also provide you just general information, final gross taxes for both years, and what one mil is equal to for both of those, and just some general information, so.
We'll tell, Rob, about 71 million with everything.
That's it, because it's 60 million net, so that's about right, transfers? Yes, sir.
Got it.
Yep, 71. And when we report anything from a grant perspective or to the state, we report it net, so it would be reported at 60. So if you do not see the 71, that's why, because we report it minus the transfers for most of our information. And that's most of the budget information from a dollar perspective. We did include attachment eight, which is the fee schedule, and you were provided a redline fee schedule so that you could see the proposed fees. And I have not received any comments of any magnitude to make any changes, most of them, as you will go through and look, you know, always there's parks and rec, there's always adjustments there. There will be adjustments in the development services on certain fees. There's lean search fees in there. I mean, those kind of, there's some new fees, and we would be glad to answer any questions you might have on that, but we did include the new fees as we always do. The fee schedule would be presented to you back again on September 21st, because that's the final adoption of the fee schedule effective for October 1st. So I would not bring this back to you unless there's a presented change until that point in time, and it would be as a new schedule at that point, so.
All right. Now, this fee schedule just shows that-
Just the current, just the current items from, excuse me, from the staff and so forth. Yes, sir. So. And then, if you're okay with me going on to attachment nine, that's the SOPs that we present to you, our standard operating procedures, policies in general, and we presented to you those changes. And I, in the memo, summarized what those changes would be, just so that it would kind of minimize the amount of time you'd have to go through and look for the redlines and figure out what we might be doing. But we basically, on the communication guideline, added the request to address the city council, you know, and adjusted the number of days, so that those things are in writing and that we can post that information on the website. And the grant guidelines, we just basically added there that if a grant's been approved by you, city council, and submitted to you for consideration, and we need to resubmit it the following year because we either was delayed or the process has continued, that we need to resubmit it the next year, as long as nothing's changed, that we are permitted to just resubmit it as was submitted originally. The order of business added the request to address the council, number of days, and add that as a policy. We did not have that one, I believe, as a policy originally. Then we have the public records policy in here that we would like for you to consider that one. And the purchasing policy looks at sole sourcing. We put some more information in there, our new purchasing agency, agent, excuse me, found some more detailed information and a way that we could better explain sole sourcing and how we need to notice that on the website, so that information is in this policy.
And it's also to bring it's into compliance with state statute as well.
Okay.
Going back to the question to address. Got flash drives, CDs, DVDs, blah blah.
Yes, sir.
My suggestion would be take the flash drives, not all of them, leave them there. Put them separately, because you're going to accept a piece of paper, and you're going to come up with that data, realistically speaking.
Okay.
I would say flash drives, in no way will be accepted and put in, because safety concerns for the network, et cetera, et cetera, concern that they will not be accepted in any manner, unless given four days ahead. Something because if somebody comes up and you allow them to have a piece of paper, and next guy comes up with a thumb rod and says, "You broke the rules by saying, 'Why am I getting, you know?"
Okay.
I would talk a lot about that, but separate that out or whatever, just to have it so bad. Thumb rods or anything that's plugged into the computer specifically, there will be no exceptions made whatsoever, they have to be there four days ahead, that way they can be cleared, tested, whatever.
Okay.
For simplicity. So I'd say, you know, if somebody's going to have a piece of paper, can I use your overhead projector? I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Okay. We'll do, make that change.
Does that even work?
It does. We test it out every, about once a month. Don't we test it out? Oh, well, right now, yes, because we've reconfigured it today, but.
Can I ask a silly question when it comes to that? Isn't there any way to put a small computer in here that's not hooked up to the network and isolated, so they can put something up on the screens?
Okay.
I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, it's, just seems impractical. I mean, they're still only going to have three minutes. I mean, if they want to plug something in, sit there talking for three minutes?
Yeah, that's a problem.
Knock yourself out, but, you know, to tell them that they can't in this day and age. And the reasoning is sound, but there's got to be a workaround.
Okay. So we'll work with IT on that.
I mean, we don't have to rush out and do it. I mean, obviously, the policy will come first, and we can always amend it, but I mean, there's got to be a way to put some dummy little thing over there that you can plug something into that's not tied in.
Okay.
I don't even care if it shows up on all the screens. We just make it show up on one. Wouldn't you agree, guys?
Yep.
Or just ban them altogether?
If they were to look at something on the internet or something, show us an HTML-
Nah, that, I think we got to still wait for. I mean, if they want to bring something they didn't know, I mean, I wouldn't.
The only problem with the internet, we were trying to do a preview so that there was nothing presented that, yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's true. I didn't think of that.
So that was what we were trying to prevent on that side of it.
You know, with the flash drives.
Yes.
[inaudible].
Or a virus or something, you know, I mean, the virus.
Right, but if somebody comes into a council meeting and hands it to the clerk, the clerk has some dummy machine over there that's tied to the network, plug it in, reviews it.
Right.
If something obscene is there.
As long as you quarantine that machine, and like, let me know that.
I still like Steve's idea. I mean, if they're going to plug something into even to that, just to put it up there, if it's got something obscene and you plug it in, you get one of those, you get one of those, oh, my God moments. So I think, yeah, they got to turn it in a couple of days before, so we can look at it and incorporate the mayor's idea, have it off the network. You should never know if we missed something, as a virus or something, but, yeah, I wouldn't let anybody walk in here and just plug it in, live TV and all, that could be bad.
Okay. We'll see what options to present those to you. Okay. We have a new policy in there for recruitment incentives to encourage employees to become active, and then a stop sign implementation. They added the city engineer will consult with the police chief when reviewing stop signs, and those were at the request of staff asked to present that. I'm not sure we'd have to ask the police chief to say that there was something else that started the stop sign.
What was that one, go over that again?
The stop sign one?
Where is it?
It is the attachment nine.
Where is it?
Yes, sir. It is page, yes, it is page 24? 24.
Our favorite one. I'm still on public records, so is it that?
It's the last two pages of attachment nine. So if you want to go to the back and then come forward, two pages, that's the easier for you. So in the scope, it states that the city engineer or designated from the public works engineering department in consultation with the chief of police shall review all stop sign requests, and that was what was added, and consult with the police chief of police shall review all stop sign requests and determine if a stop sign is warranted at an intersection following the latest edition of the MUTCD and FDOT standards. So we added one statement in there.
Do we need to add the fire chief and some gator? To determine if there really is a gator in the lungs?
If it meets state standards, why do we have to have the police chief here walking this? That doesn't make any sense. That's an engineering department job, not the police department job. The police department job is to go out there and enforce it if somebody doesn't stop the stop sign that's warranted. I'm not just, I would say take that out, just move it away a little.
Okay.
We don't need 1,000 hands in everybody's little pot here.
Unless there's a reason you think you need to have that input, chief.
The only thing public works would look for us for is the crash data, see if there was a crash data or complaints that came upon the reason for putting that stop sign there.
Wouldn't that happen anyway, even if that line wasn't changed?
Normally, they would. They probably would look for us for complaints for crash data.
All right. You're still going to do that, aren't you, Bobby? Okay. You happy now, Mayor?
Yes.
I was curious, too.
Is consensus to not change the, not to change the procedure?
No, I think it's two changes.
No. Okay, let me say this. Consensus is to remove the addition.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that was an addition.
And those were the changes on SOPs. I'll be glad if I went through any of them too quickly or didn't provide you enough information. I'll be glad to go through any of those, but we-
We have a month on this.
Yes, sir. You do. We don't bring them back until September 21st, so we definitely can look at you. Yes, sir.
Can I also just bring one quick enough, just coming through this again. They, when you guys are doing bids, purchasing is doing bids.
Oh, yeah, that's a good.
Okay?
I know where he's going.
Yeah. We got a chance to finally see what you all do, when we had a look at these goal-setting people, and not giving whoever's going to review this in the future the pricing upfront, to me, is just a terrible way to do business. And I think going forward, you all need to think about putting whoever's reviewing it what the costs are, because you could look at something and it's not, like, those quotes were not even close to being apples to apples. There were some people that stood way out, some that weren't doing a lot, and you need a lot, and you need to see the pricing, so, I'm not sure if this is the meeting for it, but, we need, because, well, you're right, it isn't operating, we need to see, and you all need to see, pricing before, while you're doing those bids, before you rank them.
Well, on most things, that's, that was a service contract, which is hard to get apples to apples, but on most things, you do get competitive pricing, that's what you go by, low price, correct?
You did.
On construction contracts, which, or commodities, whatever, chemical contracts for water plants, that is based on price, right?
Right, but these consulting contracts...
Yeah, it's always very, very tough to, if you go by low price, you may not get what you're really asking for unless you write a really, really good statement of work.
But even the, even the chemicals and stuff, where it is a commodity, tell you something, sometimes, you know, you have a guy who's doing the job, you get somebody who's a smidgen less, you have, you have no experience for. Every bid that I do during the day in my regular job clearly says, the lowest bidder does not always get the business, and there's a reason for that, because sometimes you get somebody that's so trustworthy, you know he's gonna be there, and he may be worth that two tenths of one percent more that he's getting, because you can just trust him, you know, so you gotta keep that in mind. You know, I hate when people just look at a bid, "I'll take the lowest guy", because you, you know, it's all that, you get what you pay for, and some people, like, we're seeing, we're seeing these contractors out there taking care, I see these guys out here on Sunday pulling weeds, I never saw that with the other guy, so maybe these guys are worth a little more, you know, it's all, all relevant, but I think when whoever's reviewing anything, chemicals, services, consultants, they gotta have the whole picture, you know, I think it tells a much better story.
You know, in the private sector, that's, that's fine, but in the public sector, that, that opens you up to scrutiny.
Well, there's basically four ways, anybody correct me about, to procure services in local government. One is bid, and if you bid, you're stuck with a low bid, unless the bidder is not responsive or responsible, and that means you gotta kick 'em out. The other is request for proposals, which you can include price, but price is some percentage of your ranking of that, of that, whatever you're asking for, whatever service you're wanting. The other one is request for qualifications, where all you're going by is the qualifications, then you say, "I like you the best", then you go and negotiate the price, and then there's a CCNA, which relates to engineers, architects, landscape architects, and surveyor matters, and the statutes say you rank them, you're not allowed to ask about price, and then you negotiate with your first rank, second rank, and third rank.
Is that, is that...
So you're stuck in...
Does that apply to cities, too?
Yes, sir.
Call it the gross act.
Yes, sir.
I understand, I got everyone applied, anything but federal.
Well, this is a perfect example, you just had this landscaping company just walk out on you, which is unheard of, usually they would've said, "We'll take care of you to the end of the year", I mean, what they did really, to me, was not, not good at all, but, there's gotta be a way around, here's the cheapest price, and then I gotta deal with my staff, spending money with them, to follow them around, to make sure they're doing it, so that, that's, that's the road for me, okay, so we took the lowest guy, we followed the state statute, but, I got staff doing all this work to make punch lists that were huge for that landscape.
Well, there is, you could, you could say price is fifty percent and has performance with similar jobs as fifty percent.
Called a price performance trade-off.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta get something like that.
Something like that.
We have a schedule.
You can use the low price, but he's gotta provide the value.
Because you're right, sometimes the low bidder has constant problems in, in, in jobs, or they have a history of, they're the low bidder consistently, but they have a change order history, then they can make a change order.
Yeah, but those, you know, if someone doesn't comply with the terms of the contract, you can terminate them.
Well, you could say fifty percent, I'm just going, fifty percent price and fifty percent, you know, when you look at their experience, and if they've been terminated in three of the past twelve jobs they have, you could, you could rank them low.
Well, the one for the visioning at fifty, just to wrap this up, that one, when I looked at it, I saw some really low prices, and when I looked at what I was getting, it wasn't anywhere near what we needed to accomplish a test of that figure, and then you had some people that were way out of line that weren't gonna do it, kinda like the middle of the row guys had it there, plus people who know us, what have you, so, we'll find a way, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, we'll get there, the concerns are raised.
Yeah, but we say we'll get there, and then we never get there.
We have to get there.
Right.
You guys, you guys will pick a ratio, some sort, don't you use some ratio currently for these kind of contracts, as part of your decision-making?
Yes.
Whether it's ten, twenty, or fifty percent, there is some weighted given towards the price, you're not completely blind for the ones like this that have a performance and a price.
That's right, yes.
So they are doing it currently, they weigh in the price at a certain ratio for all the different things.
Right.
But, but the problem occurs in that, and again, now, being the first time that we, for all the years I've been here, the very first time that we ever did it the way that we did it, the first time I've done it that way, is that you could look at what we were reading, you could rank some of them higher, and then when you put in the price, you could still end up ranking them the highest, when there were people in there for half the money doing the similar job.
It's, it's a trade-off.
And typically, the process is, we go through and rank the contract, and then you come back and you rank in the price after you ranked them.
But you gotta set those weights ahead of time.
And we do, yes, we do during this meeting.
Yeah, but, but the standard by which the weight was given on the form that we had, I felt that if I didn't know the price upfront, it could've been weighed a different way, and then I'd be stuck with the most expensive one to the taxpayers, which wasn't necessarily the one I needed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that would've been what you would've brought in here to us, so I, I am concerned that, like Councilman Hankett is, that when we go through these processes, that enough weight isn't being given to price, I mean, we're playing with taxpayers' money. Every dime...
What was it on the, on the goal setting, the weight we put on price?
It's ten to twenty, ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, there was some, I would've, honestly, without looking at the pricing first, I did look at them, because I didn't give the pricing right away, I looked at them, and the one I picked was right up there, the highest one, I mean, it was like a hundred thousand dollars off, so, that's, that's a big point, so we gotta figure that out.
We really do, I mean, you know, because this is where we spend the bulk of our money, and quite frankly, I don't wanna say, I, my confidence level is shot, because it certainly isn't, but I'm concerned now that all of these years, this is how we're doing it, and there could've been millions of dollars saved if you folks were looking at the price as part of your review of these packages. And yes, we might not have some of the consultants we have now, but we might have folks who did just as good of a job at, we don't tell them how much less, we don't know.
And they know the procedure that we're using, and they use it to their advantage, they know it, you know?
Well, hold on one second, hold on one second, you're making it sound like we don't even look at the price at all until it's...
That's what I'm saying.
That's not true, I mean, it's, it is not in the first review, yes, but it does come in, in the second review, because we do, it does come in, and so, I mean, it's, we are...
But if you're weighting the price, it only ten percent.
I can understand that, and that's something that we can do, yes, we can change, those are practice things.
Is there a, is there a statute on it that says you can't see the price on the first review?
Only in the CCNA fields, everything else you can't.
And those are, those are request for qualifications, which, you're not looking at anyway. When you're doing an RFP, yeah.
You can, you can weight it however you want.
We can do that, we can make it a higher weight, it's not a difficult...
Yeah, you should, you really should.
Not being critical?
No, I...
Even though it sounds like I am?
It does sound like yours.
I know it does.
Nothing.
Oh, man, I forgot to say, oh, no, oozes with all the respect.
It does sound like you're being a little bit critical.
Listen, nobody should take anything personal with this, you know, and I could hear Brian was getting, that's not where we're going.
Oh, you have first names, too, that's a bad...
But I'm just, I don't, I don't get all businesslike up there, I'm calling Brian when I'm up there at the cameras, I don't really care.
If you were at the workshop, the workshop we were at, that's a big no-no.
Yeah, well, I don't even care.
But we, yes, sir, we, we do look at all of that.
We gotta, we gotta...
Okay.
Don't take it personal, but I would...
Okay.
With all due respect, I'll do my own thing.
Teresa, I did read your, your package, I have no issues with what you're saying.
You feel better, brother?
Thanks. Hopefully it comes out.
So how's that, Councilman Schenk?
That they seem to have heard what we said, that ten percent doesn't seem to be the proper weight, that's, I, I think that's where we're at, they've been weighting it, it's just, we made clear to them that the weight, the weighting seems to have been a little inadequate, and they need to look for a little more.
Weight for the price.
Give, give a little more credence to the weight as they're looking at this, and the weight for the price.
Any other, biggest weight, really, just to wrap that up, the biggest weight is somebody that really understands this city, and has worked with it, and has had hands in big projects that can come in, and we don't have to hold a hand, you know, when I look at our staff, they're all wearing multiple hats, they don't need any more piled on themselves, somebody comes in here and knows what they're doing, and they've worked with us, that's, that should be giving them a lot more weight than maybe it is, I don't know what you're...
Say we finish by seven.
Yeah, knock yourself out, I'm ready.
Good.
I'm good.
Attachment ten, then, I'll go to the attachment ten, it's just a summary of what we have presented to you that will affect next year, be in sixteen-seventeen's budget. As you recall, the police officers at this point in time that have been added into the budget are funded out of impact fees as an interim perspective, because they are servicing the Aveda, Aveda on the park at this point in time, we do...
Are they reacting to you?
There, there's a two positions at nine months, and those two positions will roll into general fund in the sixteen-seventeen and roll in as it normally would at that point in time, and this is just for the temporary purpose of getting this established. And then we've reflected also the, the debt service cost, and therefore funds one oh eight, one oh nine, and the fact that this year we had to fund those costs in the current year for the debt service, and that we anticipate if those revenues do not come in as far as impact fees next year, that we'll be, we'll be funding those out of general fund, and that kind of, the biggest thing at this point that concerns me that on, on the impact fees is, if we bring in the impact fees in the revenue perspective, we're fine, if we do not, then general fund ends up having to fund the, the debt service, so that's all we're trying to just let you see a picture of, here, from one oh nine to one oh nine eight this year, and impact of vehicles, if we fund them at the entire amount next year, and then we've given you a note there that lets you know that, if you recall, the Aveda Medical Center, we have an agreement with them of five-year, fifty percent, forty percent, thirty percent, twenty percent, ten percent tax adjustments, so we just noted that, until they come on the tax roll, there's, I don't have a number for you, so we just provided you that information. During this past week, the human resources director presented to you the Care Here Clinic utilization report, that is in attachment eleven, and we would entertain if you have any questions, but, on that schedule, as well as a memo that was attached to it, and we've also included that, so if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those, those were in reference to our July twenty-second meeting, Mr. Mayor, in which you had a couple questions about utilization.
Right, because when I, when I look at this, I see it's Monday is where the real issue is, and no one's going to Dr. Grant Friday. The only difference between the days of the week is on Friday, we don't have Dr. Grant, so we're gonna have Dr. Grant here maybe five days a week, and see if we can up the usage during Friday.
We are going to, I think, the goal was, we put into the budget some additional hours, five additional hours, to bring Dr. Grant in all day on Wednesday, and then we would adjust Friday also, but not necessarily add hours, just adjust who may be practicing here on that day, that is something we have to work with Care Here, Crown on that one, and, and make those adjustments.
I think that is, that, that solves so much of your problems, because Friday, I mean, the other doctors do a great job, but, you know, listen, I think everybody will agree with me on this, once you get comfortable with somebody, you tend to wanna go when they're there, especially if they're treating, you know, something ongoing, if she was here Friday, you'd be fine.
Okay, because if you look, on a day you have Dr. Grant, on Monday, you're only point three over in your appointment slots, so, but obviously, it's a busy day, but Tuesday, you're point nine, so that's, you know, one additional appointment on average per day, and they're slotting twenty minutes for these appointments, I mean, that doesn't sound like a crisis. Wednesday, though, you're one point two, so it's getting bigger.
Right, which is where we intended to add the additional hours.
Thursday, though, what happens, on Thursday, you're one point nine, so, is that telling me everyone's getting sick on Thursdays, everyone's getting hurt on Thursdays? Because there are, there seem to be a bunch of work with companies on Thursday, I guess that's a three-day weekend, but, you know, or are people trying to get in to see Dr. Grant?
Not that they're being cynical.
Yeah, not that they're being cynical, but members don't lie, right, Schenk? You know, is everyone trying to get in to see Dr. Grant? And again, nothing against the doctor on Friday, but, you know, Friday, what happens, you're underutilized.
Has anybody, has anybody asked for that, is that Care Here that has to do that, or can we go over there and say we want you to be here Friday? Does it have to come through Care Here?
As far as the physician, I would turn that over to the HR director, and let her answer that question.
That's discuss the, the doctor and Care Here.
Okay. The doctor and Care Here, but we'd have to, we'd have to make the, I think that, you know, it's our clinic, I think us saying that's what we would like to see, work it out, you know, you know, I mean, if we want that, she's willing.
Does she go someplace else on Fridays, is that what she does?
We don't know.
I would bring up Lacey, if you could please come up, Lacey is with Care Here, she manages the professional staff.
Where do you take Dr. Grant on Friday, just answer that question.
Dr. Grant works at her own private practice on Friday, so that's been, her preference has been not to work on Fridays.
Okay.
There we go.
That answers that question.
That answers that question.
Do we have two of the doctors on each Friday, or is it same, I don't know?
We have Dr. Roberta Chung, who works one Friday and then alternates with Dr. Lynn Johnson.
So maybe if we have one, and see how that works, if that's a possibility, just, again, it'll lessen to, from three doctors to two, because that Friday becomes a hopscotch, you don't even have one doctor there on Friday, it becomes every other Friday, you're hitting the doctor, let's see if that, that, that could be a possible, we ask Crown if that's a possibility, if we can just, whichever doctor, work to one doctor, see if that makes any improvement or fulfills the hours, we could ask people to. Do you give a little questionnaire to say, you know, why you're not using it Friday, does it have to do with the hours, does it have to do with a change of doctor?
When's the last time we asked Dr. Grant if she could work Friday? Is that when we first signed up, or has it been recent?
No, it was actually a little less than two years ago, because our Dr. Roberta Chung, who typically worked every Friday, she was actually out on maternity leave, so we gave that opportunity to Dr. Grant first.
Right.
But we do have Dr. Roberta Chung, who, her daughter's getting older now, so she has been looking to increase, and she would come back to doing that every Friday, and Dr. Johnson would then follow, so.
She's great, but I would just say, if that's the wish, and she'd like that, I would ask Dr. Grant, two years, a long time, things change, and just ask her, and see, and that might solve all, all your, all your issues.
Might solve all the problems, we don't want to spend extra money.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not possible.
And if she says no, I...
I don't think Care Here should be charging for that extra time, to be honest, I mean...
For what extra time?
Well, at least you just open the clinic up for an extra four hours on Wednesday.
Oh, it's happened, it's happened.
All right, so, let us know.
Would you like to answer that question, or is that above your pay grade?
Well, we just would have to figure out who's going to pay her, then that would have to be, that might have to be me.
Somebody, somebody gotta pay, but just see...
I've seen your fees, you can afford to pay. We'll take that up later. Thank you.
So that's attachment eleven, if no other questions?
I guess the point here is, is that you're gonna ask Dr. Grant one more time before we extend hours, if we can get her to come in on Friday, we'll see what happens, if not...
County, have we asked why people might not be coming in?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I mean, we're solving a problem, but we haven't really determined that that is the problem, that, well, Dr. Grant's not here, so thus, people aren't coming, is that, have we kinda put that out there in a little questionnaire of people, why they might not be using Friday?
And that's, and that's a great idea, it's just, when you look at this data, when that we do, to look at that as a possible...
And also, people, people say, oh, Fridays, people, there's probably, start looking at all the other factors, there's a lot less people in the office Friday, like I said, three-day weekend type things, all those things start adding up to, there's less personnel around here probably, generally on Fridays, on a whole, so, that'd be also the point we could do, but that's what I said, we should ask, kinda ask people, hey, do you still, do you particularly pick not Fridays for a reason, and is it, some way we can ask that question, ask them.
Councilor Cenk has a great idea. Maybe a little poll, just to find out. Send out a...
I'm making prediction that seven out of 10 say, because I want Dr. Grant. That'll be my thoughts.
We could throw together a survey, send it out to everybody.
There you go.
And for some reason, I can't tell, you can't do that.
Well, I probably just said, you know, it is, we do have people who work four-tenes, and again, it's less use on Friday. All of this adds up to why Friday will probably be no matter what.
That's good. We've beaten the question first.
Okay.
And Care Here, ladies, we didn't want to say the idea is paraplegic. We just help you through this. I don't pay no attention to them.
But we do appreciate your offer to pay for it. There's no...
You guys are doing great. Thank you.
As my staff will tell you, I will never forget that.
Okay, then, attachment 12 is the justification of proposed two police officers from the police chief. So I will open the floor, if you have any questions, to the police chief or to city manager, if you have any question in reference to this presentation. Should I bring him up here?
No, it's, it's fine. It's fine. I'll sit with the chief.
Okay.
The justification is because there's more bad citizens.
More citizens will be more bad.
Yeah.
Why are we always looking for?
I think it's a little bit more than that. I think it's increasing population. I think it's more tasks to be done, and I think it's honestly, I mean, two is fine, but next year, we're going to be right back here. The city's growing, you need more. And if you want to keep it the way it is, you got to stay on it. I mean, that's how I feel. But I'll take two, that's fine, but it's not going to stop there, you know?
If we want to have Oviedo Park and places like that to be, as we keep saying, the level that we want it to service at, those prisons.
That's fine. No, no problem.
You got all the...
I appreciate them taking their time to put this together, because it was interesting data to see.
We got two, chief, we're working on it.
And then...
But now, a quick question. We add these two more, so when you have offices per population, is that our current offices per population, or is that after we add?
Current.
All right, so when you add the two, then you're going to go past winter springs.
I'd have to do that. I'd have to seriously do that up more.
Oh, no, we're probably behind because I think our population went up 500 the other night.
It went up 500.
Okay, that's...
Okay.
All right.
And don't get so excited, chief, about Longwood having three officers per thousand population, because that only means they have 30 officers, so.
Okay. Then on July 24, I did send an email to council mayor in reference to the communication service tax, just giving you the state information on how that communication service tax is computed. You had asked at the July 22 for me to provide you that information, and that was about the service tax, local communication service tax charged to billable customers residing in the area. I think your concern was how was our numbers lower? It's just because of the number of billable customers, okay? Even though maybe populations are different, the number of phones and so forth in the households, that makes a difference on that. So, and then there's a population, a part of that that's also, has to do with the population and the, I was going to read it to you here, sorry, the jurisdictions taxable sales tax and the local sales rate. So, local tax rate. So there are several different factors that are looked at when they compute that number.
Even your cable TV too, with Bright House, you know, people have cut in the cord today. They're just having the internet. There's not as much tax on that.
The number of customers, billable customers.
It's actually very small from when you went from having, you know, all three, your phone, your video stuff, and that people go to the internet. Now it's much less. And that's going to continue. That's going to be a trend. That's going to get worse. I don't think that's ever going to get better. And eventually, it's going to dry up altogether.
But I did send a note...
To some people's habits.
Right. I did send an email to the Department of Revenue asking for the number of billable customers, if they could present that information, just so we could compare the number of billable customers. And I did receive an email back that they would be sending that information out to us. So they're going to include that as part of the chart in the future so that we can see why the numbers percentage-wise are different from others when you compare population.
Right. I just have to look at my, and I meant to do that before this meeting, my cell phone bill, because mine says I'm paying Altamont Communications Tax, simply because I opened the account there.
Opened the account there.
In Altamont.
Yes.
But I live here, so, you know, my money's going over to Altamont, but they're billing me here. So I think that's, and I realize that's probably working in all directions, but we don't have cell phone stores in Oviedo Park. We have them outside.
Yeah.
Well, there's a couple of little ones.
You have more, you have more sitting.
Outside.
So, you know, is this happening to us, is my point, you know, or if the tax should be collected in the municipality with builders do, not where I necessarily sign up my service.
Purchase the phone.
So that's really where I was trying to build that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're collecting the tax on the folks who live in our city.
Almost like art.
Yeah, like when I had the furniture stores, it was where we delivered the furniture, is whose tax we collect.
Well, when I get the chart back, I'll forward that to you guys, and then I can present that and ask more questions from that point on.
And I'll double check it.
Okay.
But like I said, we used it, said Altamont.
Altamont, okay.
You know, on that little tax.
Mm-hmm. Yes. It does that. And those would actually cover, other than attachment 13, which is the attachment in reference to the...
Correct. Now, this was just an idea that I brought up so that we can see it. This isn't coming to us at full.
No, sir. It was just presented because it was presented and discussed at one of the work sessions. So just as a courtesy...
This is really more of a land development. It is a budget issue, and I know we had some brief conversations after I brought up lots of concerns you had about it and a budget issue. So I think we have the council members who may know what the concerns are with this, and this might be more of a land development condition for us to discuss. And we are getting very top-heavy, in my opinion, in residential, but...
It is a budget issue because it talks about, it is part of, it would become, if the council directed us to implement this, and council made it part of the application fee schedule, the council would have to direct us to do that. It is a budget issue because it does have an impact on revenue. But it's really, it's more of how the local economy, you know, it's a message that we would prefer less residential development and more non-residential development. It's really, it's a message. It's not so much having to do with land development, but more about the type of development that you would like to have. I know when Robin and I spoke about it, the, is it attachment, what is it, attachment?
13.
No, the transfer for debt service.
Oh, okay. Six, let me show you there. Sorry. Well, we mentioned on attachment 10.
10?
Yes. That's future year, so that's the one, is that the one you referred to?
You have attachment 10. Can blow that up a little bit, that'd be great. One of the things that we were concerned about, and I mentioned to the mayor, was that this year we had that transfer from general fund to impact fee funds to pay for the debt service. And my concern was that if we impacted residential development in this way, and residential development stopped, then we would not be collecting the impact fees for that development. And with residential development, it is charged recreation and park fees, whereas commercial is not. And so that was a concern, that there would be that loss of impact fee revenue that would come with the residential development. One of the things that I recommend, and you can see there, next year, there's the possibility of over half a million dollars having to be transferred from general fund into the impact fee accounts. And this affects everything, transportation, police, fire, wrecking products, administrative facilities, all those impact fee accounts are affected if we set our, if the application fees deter residential development like we think it might. One of the things I mentioned to the mayor was that rather than focusing on a stick to residential development, maybe we do a carrot to non-residential development. I mean, if we wanted to increase the residential development application fees, there's a way to do it. And I talked with Mr. Gru, and that night, Mr. Pohl was at the meeting, he said, we have to make sure that the message is correct, you know? And, you know, we got Mr. Gru, said, hey, make sure we're doing this in the correct manner. But we could always look at it from a carrot to non-residential by doing a reduction in the application fees for commercial to try to entice them. So. And right now, the thing about residential development is it's inexpensive compared to non-residential. It's inexpensive, and there's a quick rate of return. That's the two big things that's going on. And that's why I think you're seeing more and more people say, we want to build residential in Oviedo, and even in Springs for that matter, is that it's a quick turnaround, and it's not expensive to build. Whereas commercial, it's a different story. And they're also, they will tell you that with commercials that they can't get the finances. I mean, that's always the typical answer that we get. But, so, really, our biggest concern was the hit to the impact fees. If council gives us direction, hey, we want to increase the residential development services fees, we'll go forward and do it. Like I said, we would recommend doing the incentive approach and saying, let's reduce, you know, as much as 50%, let's reduce the commercial development review fees. And granted, we don't cover as much cost. And that's really the decision you're at, you're making. How much of the cost of development, of these development processes do you want to cover? You know? And prior councils, back in 2005, 2006, said, we want developers to pay 100% of the cost to process their applications. And so our fees are structured that way. And if we, if this council says, you know what? We see commercial struggling. We want to up that ratio. The mayor makes a great point. We want to up the ratio of residential on residential. I mean, granted, we don't love to be Lake Mary, if you think about it, you know, as far as their tax base is concerned. But the mayor makes a good point. We want to be able to, if we could slow down the residential and increase the commercial office, industrial, that's really what we should be doing.
You know, Lake Mary is a great, great place, a beautiful city, but if they didn't have I-4, they wouldn't have that. I mean, that's really, and, you know, the Seminole Way thing is going to take years to get off of that. I still think, I'm one to think that even if you had the fee, see, you got to roll the dice sometimes. You got a little ice in your veins. I think Oviedo is such a desirable place that maybe that's a little high that fee, but certainly, we could add some fee on it, and it would still come. Because, you know what? Here's the bottom line. It's getting ridiculous with the legislature that is taking all this power away. They can just build and do all this stuff and overwhelm the roads, and then the people call us and give us a lot of time like they did the last time. So I don't think you give up on that idea. I think it needs a little work, maybe not as much as was suggested, but I think even if there was a fee, I think they're still building because, you know, the income in Oviedo and the reputation of Oviedo and all the amenities you're building in Oviedo, it's going to cost more to live here, just like it costs more to live in E-throw and in the park and places, and other places are not as expensive. So I don't think you throw it out like you take these little work.
And how do we turn that fee into, A, not being a tax, or being considered...
You can charge a fee up to the expense that you incur. Anything above that is a tax. So you could, and like Brian said, y'all are really aggressive when it comes to 100% recruitment, because you don't discount your fees so much. Some jurisdictions say, we're happy to get 50% of the cost of the staff time. Y'all are making sure you get 100%, which is really pretty economically sound.
But probably having the residential is. And, you know, the residential is just putting all this undue burden on all the infrastructure. You know, the infrastructure is taking much longer to catch up than any of us anticipated, but now we have a funding source, so it will get there. So, and I realize that we're going to lose impact fees, but, you know, eventually, you're going to be built out, you're going to lose those impact fees anyway. So, you know, we can't bank the future on the fact that, oh, my gosh, next year, we have to pay half a million dollars.
That's where taxes, that's the offset that you're getting tax money for this year.
Right. Somewhere along the line, that's going away. Well, you know, that's a good argument, but the other argument could be, you know, are you ever going to collect enough of that tax money to come to that?
Oh, no, I don't think so. You know, we'll never cover. I mean, we're... I'll stick to this strict issue, because we start talking about infrastructure, you know, the argument really to me is, we're surrounded by county-state roads that are on our control, that are on our pay, that are not getting the desire that they should be getting. So that's a whole different ballgame to me.
But our residents...
Oh, no, I understand. I'm just saying, that's a, we can cross, you know, that's just crossing different problems together.
And every single one of us are, that's what we're doing to face.
Oh, yeah, that's the same. So we can't, there's nothing we can do about that, except argue, tell them, and pass up the line, and try to get them to do something. How we handle it, I'll say is, what's our, you know, house, is 2,500 for a house? Is that our impact fee?
Our impact fee for our same family, I think it's a little bit smaller.
A little bit more, roughly.
When you go across all five.
No, that's the same. It's roughly somewhere in that area. You know, I look at, start tearing things and saying, you know, another, if we look at our fees and what we're actually implementing and putting in, whatever that real charge is, if it's 3,500, I'd go up a little bit on that fee. I would then look at if they're doing just straight commercial, I really wouldn't look at a huge discount. We have vacant commercial that I'd go, you know, how do we start reutilizing the vacant commercial and to do multi-use? You know, if you have someone, I want to see, and one of the things that, I gave it to my daughter because it spoke all about millennials, and it was a great article in the League of Cities Magazine this month, and it was, the highlight was about millennials and how they think of cities and interact with cities, and things that, well, what are they looking for in usage? And a big one was, we have a lot of the stuff, not only for the group that we attract already, families, older than we have, but the parks and other stuff, but we don't have more Oviedo on there. We need that, you know, mixed use and more of it. So we really give the mixed use a bigger discount. And instead of telling them, you are...
True mixed use.
True mixed use. We define what true mixed use is, and we give that a discount and say, you build mixed use, this is your discount. You don't build mixed use, then you're paying early.
Retail.
No, exactly.
Office commercial.
Office. And again, you, how you, you know, we lay that out and say, if you're doing at least all three of them, and at least the minimum percentages of X, boom, you're eligible for, give them 50, 75%. If they're not, then they pay the full ticket. I don't care. But red, straight out residential, is to whatever we can find that our true cost is and where without making it a tax legally available. You know, another $1,000 wouldn't bother me if that's what our costs are that we can pass along. And then tailor it down to, like I said, what do we want? We want mixed use. We want reuse. And I look at also reuse of, you know, we're seeing little bits of it, but we're really going to see it 10 years from now. All the reimagining spaces, tearing down existing homes, doing other things along the historic downtown, historic areas. What do we want to do there? And how can we achieve the results we want and incentivize that? We should put that into effect now versus waiting till, like we are now, behind the eight ball, going, how do we slow the, how do we slow that, them just coming in, going, a bulldozer is down, I'm doing this, and I'm building something that you went, I wish they would have put a mixed use on that, because that's what it's really zoned for.
That's a great point, because, not 80 cents, but we're a product of the decisions made.
Exactly. And we can try to get it, use this also to get a...
We need to, it's going to be a suburb, okay, so that's what we are.
And I've said this, and all this is, and look at all those overlays and zones and different things that are from Mitchell Amick all the way up through downtown that prohibit and don't and do and can, on this side of the street they can do, on that side of the street they can't. How do we just take care of that in a much simpler...
Sounds like we're going to have some nice long way to go in the court meetings.
Well, you know, I think it needs to be easy.
See, you can do it. Look at that.
They keep going, and they're going to get a back problem.
You guys know what to do. I'm going to lay it out and go, if anything... I'm going to lay it out and go, if anything, you know, that's what you guys have been saying and will keep saying for years. To me, it's like, okay, how do we incentivize that in the right way? How do we just lay that out so that, I would say, the simpletons up here, so to speak, it's so simple and easy that we just go, "Yeah, that's what we need to do. Do it that way."
Did you say...
With all due respect, with all due respect, yes. I laid my stuff in there, but, you know, how do, you guys have been saying that for years. This is what's coming, this is what's going to be, you know, but if we can, again, jump ahead a little bit, use this opportunity to not only kind of help stop the sins of the past, but shape the future at the same time, take care of it. That's how, to me, that's the easiest thing to do.
Well, this would be my suggestion to you. Back in 2005, we completely restructured the process of how we do things. And as part of that, once the, once we had the process adopted, one of the things that we did was, we sat down and we said, "Okay." We took each process and we said, "This person does this many hours." And we developed a cost for each process, and then we brought it to you. And we said, "How do you want this?" And the council said, "Well, let's start at 50% now. Six months, we'll go to 75%. And then the next year, October 1st, we'll go back." I guess my recommendation, hearing you tonight, my recommendation is, let us do that again. My, the, well, I guess what I would say is, in September, adopt the recommended fee structure that's in attachment eight. But we'll begin a process, now that the, now that the council has adopted the new process, we'll then begin the process of taking an unlooking, what's the cost? And then we'll bring those to you and say, almost like what we do with impact fees, and say, "Council, here's the max. You tell us if you wish to do 50% or less."
Councilman Schenk just said in a very roundabout way, because we need to do visioning. Because that would answer every question you just brought up.
So, safely. I disagree with that.
Not when I say you did. But anyhow.
Would that be a bit of a pledge?
Yeah.
Find out our costs currently, what our new cost will be.
All right.
And then we can say how to give it up.
Shouldn't be subsidized now at all. I don't think, you know, parks are what we're... Listen, you guys are cutting into Teresa's five-minute presentation. You have every...
Well, I heard you were trying to get you out of Teresa.
All right. Brian, do you have anything else for us?
No, attachment 13 was the last attachment, unless I have...
We could beat 13 back.
Yes.
Good job, Brian.
Glad to answer any questions you might have from the...
We're in good shape.
I think we'll all schedule one of the ones if you need them.
Yes, sir.
We'll just do our normal Friday after your pop.
We're here.
Councilman Schenk and I will argue over who has city managers here.
I'm good.
Depends on who's up there first, right?
Prove it, it's good. He did great.
Actually, I think I, I think you threw me out two weeks ago.
I did throw you out two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, we're moving on to Dr. Burr.
Thank you guys for being here. Thank you guys for being here.
Yes, sir. I see, I'm just...
Joe, you get to leave? What the heck?
Now, wait a second. Everybody has to stay for town...
Joe, who's here?
Barbara has to stay, everyone else should have to stay.
Without recess, moving on?
Bullet points. Bullet points. I think we like, we all, I can tell, I went through everything that you have here. I like the direction.
Okay.
Me too. I'm good.
Schenk?
More.
See what I mean, Brian? I told you.
That's all right.
You're talking about...
Nobody's hiding this now.
No, we are not going to cover.
You hear, you're going straight here now.
This is what we presented.
I just have more than one...
Is that the last attachment?
Because if, yeah, two of them combined.
Now, even this gets me in a dink, because you, you know what I see in here? I see lots of stonework, lots of different materials, and those are the types of things we like. Articulation.
There's what I want more of.
More articulation?
More of.
Okay.
More fun for salt and articulation.
You see, like, you know, it's right there on that very front picture. That's what we were after.
More minimums. We just want more minimums, that's all.
That is, that should be...
If you get whatever, add one. That's how I feel. Just add one unit.
Go ahead, Dr. Burr, tell your...
So, we have in the amendment two attachments. One, it would be the presentation, quicker presentation, a short presentation. And then we have the second attachment is what I distributed to you. And that's, this would be the handouts that we'll be giving to, yes, to developers. So, as soon as we have the, you know, the standards approved, we are going to prepare one of these to each type of development. So, we'll have one for townhomes.
For every type of, you'll do it for commercial, you'll do it for retail, you'll do it for office, you'll do it for...
Well, it's going to be townhomes, multifamily, mixed use, office and commercial. That's, and in commercial, we'll also tackle big boxes, large retailers.
Yeah, we don't have any architectural standards on residential, why not?
We did not approve in the approval process any for single family. That would be very hard to, to enforce. So, we did not propose that, it was not approved in the, in the, in the process. We just approved for those five types of development. So, I would ask, like to ask you...
Residential would be easy. Go up to Asheville, just get those, like Bill Maher and...
Single family, individually, I mean, that's, that's harder, I think, too. But I have, I would like to ask you, would you like me to go through the presentation or would you like me to go for questions if you had a look?
You want to get, just honestly, though, one through it, because I think, I think this, when I looked through this, which is really what I looked through, and I, I personally like the direction. Councilman Schenk has some questions, so Councilman Hank seems pretty good.
This is exactly what we've been asking for, for all these years. You know what's great about this? Everybody's going to walk in, the guys that call us all the time, and I'm going to go read the book, you got to follow the book. It's very simple. That's all we do.
Well, we'll put that in the website, and then we'll have them to be handed out to you.
Our updated, since we updated, maybe by next year, website.
Yeah, that'll be great. Before I start, I just want to introduce Lotta Hansman. Lotta has been working with us as a planning intern. She's an Oviedo resident, and she's a rising sophomore at University, at Rice University. And she has been working with her in Texas, yes, to pursue an architecture degree, and she's been working with us, and today's her last day.
I was going to say, back in the next couple of days?
Yes, and she...
I was going to say, yeah.
Is that a football team? There you go. There we go. We're going to go.
It is pretty good.
They beat Tennessee.
No.
You sure?
Yep. I feel like these Carolina teams are like, good, very sturdy teams.
She really helped us with the research, so we appreciate her.
Let's see what my focus was.
Now, what high school did you go to here?
Okay.
A Lion.
Good.
It's her first time coming to city council board session, so...
Brian's threesome will be Lions. I had a Lion and a Husky. Husky, Huskies, but now Saints. That's a good name.
So, going over quickly with the presentation. In this handbook and the presentation, we are trying to expand a little bit more than the architectural standards itself, because we wanted to tackle design for the site. So, we recognize four different elements that we want to regulate. One is the site design, then the building site and how the building is oriented in the, in the sites, the building form, which would be the architecture, and then accessories, accessory structures. And I'm just going to go quickly on the things that we are, that are different or that we are proposing that is, we didn't have in the code before. We are trying to incentivize some comprehensive policy, comprehensive plan policies that are encouraged by the comprehensive plan. So, COM Plan has policies that are required or encouraged. The required ones, we cannot deviate, but we want to incentivize those that are just encouraged by the COM Plan. The COM Plan talks about density bonuses for some land use designations. And it tackles, it associates with innovative design, but it doesn't say what this innovative design is. So, we are trying to give, you know, developers a guide, you know, of what we are trying to achieve. The same thing with deviations. We approve a lot of deviations. They have to, the applicant and developers have to propose deviation mitigations, but again, we don't have standards for that. That would be a good way to say, "Well, this is the pool of things that the city's trying to achieve." So, if you're proposing deviation, you have to find a mitigation within those, you know, those policies, you know, things that would encourage those policies. So, for instance, if you preserve more than 25% of trees with a larger caliper, that would be something that would be either eligible for density bonus or to, to be used as deviation mediation. Or if you provide complete public streets, we cannot, or we are not prohibiting private streets, but we are incentivizing public complete streets. If you provide a percentage of units that address the communities for lifetime, these for townhomes is an important thing. I mean, if you have elevators, if you have master bedrooms at the ground floor, or low-impact development engineering solutions for stormwater, or if you provide a percentage of the parking to be used as charging stations for electric cars, or solar energy solutions, or policies that would help the healthy, health design solutions for our Healthy Weight Community Champion program. So, for instance, if you provide within your development, community gardens, or if you have bicycle lanes or trails, for instance, and now even for the hospital, the hospital has the pond area. So, we made a comment that if they could, they are providing a trail, but they could have markers on the trails so that if you know that you have, you go there, you have two laps and this, or two miles, that is something that we could report, that these are policies to encourage people to have a healthy, you know, lifestyle. To the site design, one of the things that we changed is that we are proposing that developments that have units above, in this case, 25 units, they would be required to have two access points. Again, we are trying to break the suburban pattern of development in a way that, you know, so we are trying to avoid the cul-de-sac development, where you have only one entry way.
Can't say that no more.
And we are trying also in the, in the guidelines here, we are saying that gated communities and cul-de-sacs are discouraged. We are not prohibiting it, because some, in some places, if there is no way to connect, I mean, if people would like to have a gated community, that would be no huge impact for the city. But we are trying to promote neighborhoods that connect, right? For landscape, landscape is a very, it's a challenge for townhomes, because townhomes have a more compact development. So, we are saying that canopy street trees should be placed at a minimum of intervals of 50-foot intervals, right? Alternatively, we can accept medium street trees, but at a reduced interval. We are requesting one canopy tree per lot, but we could alternatively accept a tree, canopy tree being replaced by one medium tree and one palm tree. Again, these in townhomes, they are major issues to accommodate. And for landscape, we have two goals. One is shade, and the other is greenery. So, sometimes, for instance, a palm tree doesn't provide shade, but provides greenery, and that's something that we would like to, to achieve. So, we have pictures showing, you know, what is, what we want. We want, we'd rather have the second, the situation on the left than a 100% deviation on the right.
And this is, as you look through all these pictures, I'm just going to say, the one thing I want to point out, but we don't want that building. Very plain, there's no articulation, it's white. I know it's hard to find pictures that fit all the criteria.
And that's why we were saying adequate landscape.
I know, but you know, as you go through, if you look, that's going to be a theme throughout is, on the left side will be the one area that you're looking at. Yes, we're talking about only the landscaping here. Don't look at the building. The actual building, the actual building on the left looks better than the building on the left, but the landscape on the left, it's just one of those kind of things. If we can, I know it's a pain.
Yeah, and that's why we were trying to, to call out what we were, what...
And it does, but I just, it becomes one of those, as you're looking through and you start piling through, you just start looking at like ugly buildings on the left, and we're looking at one little part of, "Well, this fenestration is good, but the rest of the building is garbage, whatever." But the rest of it, so...
We try to avoid that.
I know, but it's very difficult, but I understand that. But it's just, that's, that's one of the hardships that we...
But it's good for you to pinpoint the ones that, you know, you don't think it's...
And it's such a diversity that, that's a much nicer, I mean, there's so much more articulation going on in that building than the one on the left. And it's stuff, you know, things don't, you may not like the style, but there's a lot of stuff going on versus the shop white.
I think it's just the color on the left that, that makes it look...
There's just so much interesting that, if it stands out to me.
So, lighting. Lighting, two things we include, one is the LED is now required, and that was something that we discussed with Public Works. And the other thing that we are also allowing is illuminated bollards for walkways, not for streets. But if you have, and if you want to have more paths, more pathways, more walkways within the neighborhoods, then we could allow, you know, a lower type of lighting. Again, the picture would...
Now, that should apply throughout the whole city.
Well, we are starting with this one, and then the others will follow some of the things that we can extend.
And that, that should be enunciating on developments, too.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's probably...
See, that looks like the one on the left.
Yeah, again, we were just trying to say that the scale of the lighting is more adequate on the left, and the bollard would be allowed. And this one doesn't have the street lights along the townhomes and have large, you know...
It's lighting the streets, not the sidewalk.
Gas parking, that's something that for townhomes, we thought that it would be good to require. So, we need to have, again, because they are more compact, we need to require at the site level some gas parking. And that, this will be the calculation that we are thinking of. We have to make some simulations and check what is, we haven't, you know, reached yet the final number, but this is something that we, we researched, and it's between 0.25 to 0.6.
And it's, it's, better is minus one, and then plus half for gas park.
Yes, yeah, for the unit, yeah. Sign for neighborhoods, again, we are just trying to give the guidelines, and we thought there is nothing in the code that would prevent an electronic or any changeable copy signs for neighborhood entrances. And we thought it was not really, you know, appropriate, so...
We don't have that anywhere, or you can't put changeable sign on it?
We don't have in the code, so...
Can't get one in front of his neighborhood, he keeps fighting.
I'm just, I'm just...
And we found in, in, you know...
The way, the way, the way the code is written right now, yes, a subdivision sign came in, they could request 20% change.
Oh, you'll be getting one tomorrow. There you go.
So, we can run this if we're going...
Yeah, so I, we, we thought it was good to clear, you know, that, so we have one that we found in the internet that has, you know, announcing apartments in townhomes, so. Orientation. We are trying to make sure that front entrances are clearly defined and are facing streets. We, for townhomes, we wanted to make sure that we didn't, we have, we have a situation where you have front to front and back to back. We didn't have, you know, a situation of, we have front to back to buildings. And also, because you have, you have the possibility of having the frontage facing like either a park or a common area, then we would have to give that space. What would be that space? Again, we are proposing 50. We'll have to make some simulations to see if that is the, the number. Again, we are proposing 50, we'll have to make some simulations to see if that is the number. And everything that is quantifiable can come to you as a deviation. So I mean, even if we get it a little bit wrong, it can be requested, but we'll research to see if this is the number that makes sense for us. Lot widths and setbacks, we are proposing a minimum of 20 feet for the lot width.
Do you need to go by this one? Roll by this one? Do you need to go by either, like, you know? I'm gonna make it move fast.
Okay, we can move fast if you have questions. And this is just to show what we are proposing and what are the, how it relates to the neighborhoods that we have in the city, right? On-site parking, we are changing the calculation because we don't think it makes sense to apply the same calculation for single-family residential. So we are saying that it should be the number of bedrooms minus one. We may have to put the minimum, because if you have for any reason a situation with one bedroom, you know, townhome, that would at least require one parking. But garages are encouraged to be rear-loaded. And the other thing that we did is that we don't want garages to be the prominent element in the facade. So we are saying that the facade should occupy not more than 50% of the primary facade lengths. And then we have pictures to show that. We are allowing detached rear garages on the lot to provide a courtyard, internal courtyard. And in few projects, we also found many projects that would have not the parking in a common area, not attached to the beauty itself. So this may be a possibility that we'll provide in the code so that.
Shane parks in a common area every night.
Yeah, for.
Guys rear-loaded garage, he's like applying all of this.
Well, you know, if I go there and have my automatic charging station, because I could just plug into a light bulb.
You can plug around a light bulb.
Because I have to move over there to get a public charging station. No, right, it's gone.
And this will be the situation for the park, for the garages. We don't want a situation where we have the whole facade dominated by the garages, not only because how it looks, but the effect that it has on the street. With that, you don't have on-street parking. You don't have, you know, a proper place to provide the landscape. So that's not something that we would like to see. So we are limiting that. Then articulation. Here we have a question for you, because ideally, we would like to see variation, you know, between the individual units. No variation, I mean, many times, especially if it's done in a poor way, I mean, it looks very boring. But we have classic examples that, you know, and London has a lot of townhomes and you have.
Baldwin Park has that.
Baldwin Park also has. They are the same, and they have a quality in the set of buildings that would, you know, make sense. So we want to ask if you want to have that possibility, and that the others, the next slide will show. If no variation is provided, then we would require more architectural elements. That would be a way to address, or you could address, if that happens, if a good project comes with no variation, we would bring as a deviation.
I like the variation myself, I do.
As a requirement.
I see, I see, I like the, I mean, again, to me, it's more variation is good, but the high quality that you look when you go through Baldwin Park and see that it is actually very reminiscent of London.
Yeah.
That the street you go down, the main boulevard, it's very much a high-end look to every one of those buildings rolling down. I think it gets into, again, how much articulation and you have within the building. There's, to me, there's nothing wrong with the one on the right, except it's a style to me. I don't particularly love it. It's a style that, you know, if you like that style, but I think.
So the question, Mr. May, is that are we going to require variation between buildings?
In the back slides, let us see the back slide if you can.
Or are we going to allow, if no variation is provided, then we would require more architectural elements?
And that's the issue, I have with them, and you know, like the Beazer ones and.
Like the little ones across.
Yeah, I mean, even the ones by Steve, I mean, there's no articulation in these buildings. There's no variation. And then the repeat variation, you know, becomes even worse sometimes in these townhomes. I mean, I was in one up in Sanford today, and it's just, you know, it's the same thing over. And no matter what the block you turn down, it's the same pattern.
The brick on the bottom, the.
Which is, I mean, and I understand that that's why they build townhomes and that's how they get their, build their profits. But no, I'd like to see variation.
As a requirement. We can always bring the no variation, a good project with no variation as a deviation.
If they have high qualities at a ballpark, it's something that's exceptional, then they could bring it forward and.
Right, we don't want to design their projects, but we want to get away from this. That's just same, same. I mean, you drive a house, you go through the town.
Three stories, the two stories aren't as much. If you look two stories, go back, two stories, start patterning that.
I mean, you drive through those ones behind Victoria's, and I always forget the name of it.
Yes, exactly, the ones, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's.
What's on the right is typical of Alzamalita, Harvard, townhomes. I mean, Billmore. But the ones at the mall at least have a little bit.
I think the variation is based on the builders.
And for builders.
Okay, so we'll.
Yeah, when we look for more variation, and that's.
How about these guys?
I'm looking for more articulation, and that's gonna force them into variation. If they wanna, if we require more articulation as a base, as a, you know, here's your minimums, then they're either gonna come in.
But articulation, they can articulate well, one unit can replicate that, you know, analogy, right?
But that leads them to a higher end, because if they're gonna articulate that much individually and replicate it, they'd have to come to us, but it would probably have to be, you know, again, it gets them to a higher end that they're starting off with versus, you know, the ones behind that have no articulation, they're stuck all flat and, you know, the articulation is front door, front door, front door.
Different types of materials. I mean, they can build the same box, because their economy and scale comes from the box. But they could skin the boxes differently on all the different units. So that way, at least it looks like a different neighborhood.
Again, the bricks I was watching, on my, you know, the brickwork, it's brickwork, how they do the brickwork. Yes, they got a brick, non-brick, brick, but then that brickwork has to be different in some larger fashion than just, oh, it has one bar, you know, has a little, you know, piece of non-brick, it was stuck, I was shutting through on this one, and the other one doesn't have it. That, you know, just needs to be a little more.
So materials, materials, we are proposing to have a minimum of two materials.
See, that's right, just keep adding one. To me, it's add all this stuff, add one. Because, and the reason I say that is, when we went through this for commercial, you know, seven, eight, nine years ago, whatever, and we were looking at all this, I'll use Dollar General, his favorite place, or whatever one it is, as the example. It's not that it looks well, it's the worst-looking building, but that wasn't the idea. It was to have real shutters or real stuff, not, well, look, I can put these fake things on and it passes your test on it's a differentiation, because it comes out this much, and then goes right back in, but it really doesn't add to the look in any way, shape, or form.
Beats the heck out of the square one they wanted to build.
It does, I'm saying, it's a little.
Tony will tell you that Dollar General is the envy of Central Florida.
See, that uses an example, several times.
And that's why I say, it's, I think, if we go for more, then the, again, they're gonna aim for the minimum. Then the minimum falls where we're really thinking it might be versus, we're thinking the minimum's gonna be here, and they hit the minimum, and they found the real minimum was, the way they skirted around it. They said, here's our minimum, look, there's a new way to do this, to skin this, now it meets your standards technically, but it looks.
But you're proposing to have more than two or?
Sure, yeah.
Three. But the percentages also play into this minimum, right?
Well, whatever you want, I'll say it this way, whatever you're thinking to me, add more. Just, to me, it's go crazy, think of what you really want and put that in there. Because I'll say it all the time, I don't care how hard the code is, they'll go it, they'll do it. We can make the bar here, we can be Weston. And I say that, my line is, hey, Weston says, the leaves on your tree have to be, you know, on your hedges are this big, and that every one of them matches the match. Great, people build there. You know, I don't want it all to look the same, I don't have to have it. But if we set our bar here, people will pivot. As long as we're consistent, cohesive, they'll be there. But if we set the bar here, you know they're always aiming down here, and they seem to always kind of veer that bar down all the time. So if you set a little higher.
We have to make some simulations, because my problem is that if we require three as minimum, we don't also want to have, you know, a facade that is a disposal of materials like.
I'm just saying that as a, how, you guys figure out how to get us, again, we want the bar to be here, if we set it here, it's really gonna end up here. So we have to push, set the bar a little higher than we want, so that, you know, when they figure it out, how they can push the bar down on us.
Tony, the thing I do, though, I mean, I think what you guys have has significantly upgraded it. I think if you tell them you want way to the moon, that's gonna just turn.
No, I'm saying.
I think I'd be more comfortable with, I know where he's going, and I don't disagree, but I'd say, look, you gotta do two, and there is no discussion for it, that's it. You know, at least that's, because I think what Steve is trying to say is, okay, well, tell them three, because this will do the job, you know? But I think it's very contradictory, you must do two.
You're assuming, you're assuming they're gonna ask for deviation.
We don't know, we know they are. We know they're gonna not ask for deviation, they're going to find the material, the design, the whatever, that takes what we were thinking, that's really nice and high-end in that beautiful picture, they're gonna find a way to do it cheaper, less expensive, and it's gonna look that way, so that we know, yeah, it looks good, it's okay, and it meets code, but it's not what we were thinking. So I'd rather scooch them more, a little higher to what we were thinking, by kind of setting, we're thinking of that plus, whether it's another one or 25% more, 20%, whatever it is, but just so that we can get what we're aiming for versus where they're aiming. Because they're aiming, I said, to always get, to do it cheaper, less expensive, with materials that aren't as good as we've stated. And they're gonna keep finding new ways to do it. Well, you said stone, blah, blah, blah. Well, here we have this other material that is stone, it's this, it's this, but it's not the same. So whatever it is, I said, we just raise it a little more, so we get what we're aiming for. That's all.
And two materials excluding windows and.
It sounds like Councilman Chen Cassis, Councilman Hankin and I are leaving.
I just don't know how you make out, we're good, I read it, rock on.
Move on, so let's see what. And this is how we, the materials are just, you know, brick, stone, and we are limiting siding in Stockholm to a maximum of 40%. So that would, you know, make you have to search for other materials that complement. We have a question as we can move on.
Yeah, you see, this is how I've attacked it. Is that on each surface, or is that on, how do I have that 40%?
We will have different percentages depending on if it's a primary, secondary. Yeah, because our role is to improve the primary facade. So we don't want to be very hard on the rear facade facing conservation.
That's why I just want to make sure.
That is not visible, right?
But sometimes that rear facade faces the street.
Then, well, if it faces a street, it's not a rear facade, yeah.
Yeah, we find it still is a primary, if it has.
It faces an alley, we are saying it's a rear facade. And we have a picture here showing that.
I went by, again, I was all over Central Florida. I went by some townhomes in Castleberry off of the new Lake Drive extension, Seminole Boulevard, around that bend that they built there. And they're very similar to what you are describing here, where the fronts face, face each other, corridors, rear-built garages. But those garages face Seminole Boulevard. So I just found it odd as I'm driving past, you know, as I'm approaching it, I can see the front, I say, oh, wow, look how nice that is, and then I got this blank wall garage.
I know those ones, yes, I know those ones, yes.
With, yeah, when they build those new homes, and I, or the other part, or something maybe.
Yep, it's kind of strange, you're right.
I just.
Yeah.
And I only noticed that we were gonna have this discussion tonight, I'm looking at it, going, you know, down the middle, then the back is just like.
And that's why we have to link the architecture with the site plan, because the way it's oriented, right, if it's visible or not, makes a big difference.
Basically facing each other, you know, except, I guess, the ones, there's gonna be one set that'll face Ala Fae, Trail, you know, this is the back of.
They're fronting on Ala Fae, there's only that one that's on, it's the street over there. Miss Bosnian's.
All right, well, anyways, you take into consideration that they're facing a major road, and they gotta do something.
Then it's not rear, yeah.
They're going to do something to the back, it's major city.
Because then it would not be a rear facade for us if it faces a street. Materials, just to show, we have bricks and we have precast bricks. Do we leave it open? Because this is all coming to you.
Precast bricks is cheap, I agree. And that's the kind of, that's where they're gonna keep coming to us with.
And here we show the precast, and the same thing with the stone, right? We have precast stone and stone. What are we talking about? Because it's, sometimes it's even hard to.
Brick is brick.
Brick is brick.
So we're talking about natural brick, okay? A natural stone and, so here we have the mold right down on the left that gives that appearance of stone, but it's not really stone.
There's, you know, there's such a wide variance of that. Is there some good stuff? Yes, there is.
But I.
Are they gonna use it?
I agree with you. Let's set the bar up here, and if somebody come in and prove that they've got a material and bring it in here, say, this is what it's gonna win by, allow me to do this, well, that's fine.
Because I said, there's a lot of precast stuff, there's a wide variety of, yeah, it looks, ugh.
But the stones do look better precast than the bricks.
Yes, the stones do, I agree with that.
Brick, the brick precast stuff is sometimes really bad.
Wood panels, we make a distinction between wood panels and siding, although they are in the same category of percentage. And we are seeing more of that modern look in Winter Park, in, you know, in the apartments thanks to UCF, so this is Stockholm, just for them to give.
Yeah, the one that they just built by TJ's, there was a pretty nifty looking apartment.
Yeah, I can't.
Fifty by Cheddar.
Yeah, well, by Cheddar's.
TJ's, that's what we're calling it.
I O's or something like that, yeah.
You don't worry, Tom Cavanaugh might have something like that, I'm sure he's.
Of siding, examples of siding for, you know. Again, desired, not desired.
A school, isn't it?
Yeah, we are, these are townhomes, but it looks like a school. I mean, we don't want also 100%.
It looks like it's a factory.
Brick.
It does.
A factory, yeah.
But at least it works.
Maybe it's what they want.
But I would say it's converted warehouse.
Moving on, these are just, again, examples, and then we made.
That kind of looked like that street in Live Oak where Meritage built, like, eight of those 5,000 square feet homes in a row.
Townhomes.
Flowering, flowering street. If you ever want to see an example of what a single-family residential development should not look like, go out to the second entrance of Live Oak one day, make a right on Flowering Street, and when, as soon as the conservation goes away, Meritage built those big, huge, 500-square-foot one, they built like six of them in a row. Looks like a market, they just get it down to six of them.
And what's even worse is, you do come through this long, winding.
Beautiful, it's beautiful.
It's conservation, conservation, boom, he just hit these 5,000 monstrosities.
And there might not be six, but there's at least.
Oh, there's a four, four, five.
Yeah, maybe, there's a lot of them. Because I think it gets broken up. It, because I think it gets broken up by one slightly different model and it starts all over again.
Moving on, we, then we made some simulation on what would be the Hamptons. And the Hamptons did not complete, would comply, you know, this facade, for instance, but they have a lot of variation, right?
It's the sign, the roof lines would have more, I think.
Is that the new one?
These are the six, the six units. They have a couple of different arrangements depending on the...
Like they have built a maximum, that's, that's...
So in this one, for instance, they have 50% of siding. So they would be above, you know, what we would, so for us, they would have to provide a little bit more of brick or, yeah, or any other material, so. But we were trying to simulate and see, well, this is a good one, how does this comply or not comply?
Certainly, the better ones that we have built, they have reactions, you know, the
Again, just making some calculations, we'll have to have different percentages depending if it's a rear or a front facade. The other thing is that, and this is the whole packet that you have here. No, I'm just going to raise two things, two things. One is the height, we are putting the height to 45 feet. That would be, allow three stories.
Is that up to the sill or up to the top of the roof? The sill. How tall, how tall are they?
They are lower than that. I checked today.
That gives you 12, so you got...
Oh, that'll give you taller ceilings.
Right, tall, tall. All of them can be 10 foot, you know, versus all of mine are 10.
I was in a house like that about a month ago. The downstairs was 12 foot and the upstairs was 12 foot and the doors were all 10 foot, up and down. That was nice. That was nice. And they were solid wood doors, so they really, when they shut, they clumped.
Oh.
And the house is ugly in the backyard. It was flooded.
And the other thing is, we are giving now some guidelines for solar panels, which is something that is also coming, right? And we were discussing, I mean, we would like to have, we will have to research a little bit more, but we want to be, to encourage it to be invisible if there are an external, you know, element to the facade.
If they have accessory garages or off garages, they could do them there too very easily.
Yeah, but if they are part of, and we have examples here in the, it's way in the back, or you can get the handbook in the end, if it's, if it's an element of the facade and there are, you know, there are solar shingles, there are now elements, there are structural, right, to the, then they could be visible. So we would give, you know, that kind of guideline. And if you are okay with that template, we'll use the same template for multifamily and for mixed use.
Except for this, no. That would be, that way we'd not be, the councilman's carnival proves...
Well, that's not desired, yeah.
The only answer is this is mob neon.
There you go.
I think we have here in two, just two pictures that we asked a question if it's desired or not. I'm just trying to find...
You did have a question once or two.
Yeah, and I just wanted to...
I did notice that. I'm like, I didn't know, I want to ask you, see, not desired, there it is, the building form roof, not desired. Not enough finished, you know, there's not enough stuff, you know.
Those pictures aren't numbered. I noticed Steve, he sees it.
This one, building roof?
This roof over here. It looks like an industrial reefer.
Yeah.
You know, it looks like an industrial reefer.
And the other one, yeah.
And I like the pastors, but it's like, yeah, there's not enough.
I agree with that.
What didn't you like about this one?
This one and the other one, the...
What didn't you like about, it's not that I, that one is a no.
That one is a no, okay.
Yeah, that's...
That is a no.
That's clearly a no.
And, and the, these are all more, more than architecture.
Again, the whole style is modern, so...
I like it.
I said why, that's what I was, I was going to say, is that as a...
Very European.
Very European, yeah.
Yeah, it's very modern. It just, but the whole building fits with the building, you know, so it's not my style.
Not my style. I'm not as hard against it as the other one. I would leave that to your interpretation and...
Okay, okay.
I said, it fits in...
We were trying to avoid those tricky ones.
I'll leave that to all of you over there to, if somebody came in with something like that, then make it work.
Yeah, because I think, I think that we cannot, we would not like to direct people to do one certain style.
Right.
So we have to have examples, good examples of both or more than one style that, you know, we are...
Well, it's like that one on 50, again, I saw, I watched it go up the whole time. It is, it has a lot of nice look, turn out between, love all of it. I think it's, it's different, it's...
Seems to be there's a lot of management tells me they figured out a way to do it cheaper.
Exactly. It's also, you can see it's less expensive, they don't like, that has glass windows, a lot of anything, you know, that one does, it has, yeah, false little movements with not a lot of black, you know, so, yeah, there's stuff, but it has a whole...
I think it's raining sideways, Barbara.
But I like everything in this, I said, having it, I always have to support because, again, they're going to, they're going to...
Well, Councilman, he has questions. He wants to go back to...
I think it's a, they always are aiming for less, so I just want to aim them for...
Which one do you want to go back to?
Listen, if you read your vote on Sunday, you spend your three hours doing any questions, you're good.
Can I show this one? These ones are development in Winter Park. They are selling those townhomes for one point something million.
Wow.
Townhome.
Yeah.
They are actually pretty nice.
I think, I think...
So we'll try to bring them here.
Anything else, Teresa?
That's all.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Very, very excited.
Thank you.
Exactly what we need.
You are in terms of...
Our super sophomores, have you called?
What you called? You're going back as a sophomore?
I would just say, Teresa, you know, and I say this, Brian, all the time, sometimes you make it, you know, you make it look easy. We know this is not easy and I would just say, I know you're breaking this up, we got to do mixed use and commercial, all that, do them like this.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Just do them like this and we'll fly through this, you know, you might have to walk Councilman Britain through it, but other than that...
We'll try to bring two nice sessions.
All right, one last question. Do you have any more?
No.
Guys, one last issue, this Thursday meeting is a stick. Don't you double it?
I try to reschedule this one to Monday, but it wasn't flying, you know?
Brian, what I would like to say...
I know a lot of them, okay, with someone who's in the air, they had no other issues, so...
Here, here's what I'd like to do.
Monday is our day.
My days are meeting, are counseling, you know, historically, but look, is the third one, did you say that? From now on, and yourself, your staff, Barbara, if there's a meeting to be called, I don't want to see the email going out, you know, can you make it? I want the email going out saying, I need to know if you're attending so I know if I have a forum.
There you go.
Just call the meetings.
I said, we start pencil, we, you know what? White pencil is the third Thursday and the third Monday. That just, start using that one if you want and we know then that that's the one, so if you got vacation, if you got whatever, you're not planning it for that one.
That's a good idea. I mean, you can just say it's gonna be...
The first, the third, I mean, the second. I mean, the second or fourth, sorry.
So we would have to reschedule because we have one for September that is already scheduled for Thursday.
No, that's, you know, when I, when I change in, I have to...
I'll be, I'll be...
Monday, you know, you figure, you got the rest of the week for yourself. It's so easy to be in one day, it's a crappy day to begin with, so might as well just extend it to 7:30 and...
Well, I'll just pick it on my day, second or fourth.
Right, that first Thursday, I think there is a work session. I mean, you know, I've got Metro Plan, then the Chamber Luncheon, then a work session.